So today I'm going to be doing a review of the fiscal year 2021, our current fiscal year. And then I just like to provide a little bit of information on fiscal year 2022 planning, mostly related to our revenue projections for 2022. I'm joking about an idea really deep talk about a lot of details of the budget.
And your department heads as well. So I thought it would be helpful to let you all know, how did you start the year? Where were you on July 1st of 2020 with your finances? And one of the things that we look at in local government finances is at the end of the year or when we're finished with your audit, we look at your total fund balance. And the town's total fund balance in their general fund was $6,998,486. The local government commission has a formula that we have to go through where they restrict a portion of your total fund balance at the end of the year. That restricted portion is made up of two different amounts. It's one portion of that is called restricted by state statute, and that includes any receivables that you have at the end of the year. Excuse me. It also includes any uncompleted contracts that you have at the end of the year. And that amount at June 30th of 2020 was $1,363,604. When you subtract that out, you get what we refer to as your unassigned fund balance or unassigned financial position, $5,634,882. It is often helpful to look at that unassigned portion as a percentage of your total general fund expenses for the year. Your total general fund expenses last fiscal year were $9,578,667. So your unassigned as a percentage of those expenses is 58.83%. But I think that one thing that we need to take into consideration is that those total expenses include your beach nourishment debt, which is significant. It's about $1.4 million. So I don't think it's really fair to include that because that's being funded by some specific revenues, your MSD revenues. So I think it's also helpful to back that out and look at what the percentage would be without that. And without that, you're at 69.3%. And if I'm not mistaken, you have a target unassigned fund balance of 75%. So without that beach nourishment, you're very close to that number. Any questions on that? So another big component of your finances is your capital reserve fund. You all have a capital reserve fund where you hold the money for your beach nourishment. At June 30th of 2020 or July 1st, you had $1,578,805 in that, in your beach nourishment reserves. And just to let you know, that was after we had subtracted $428,66 for some contracts that you had in process with CPE for some beach nourishment projects. Those projects were the 2022 permitting and design, the post-dorian repair project, the 2020 annual monitoring, and then a post-dorian emergency survey. There was a small amount for that as well. So that's where you stood with your beach nourishment reserves at the beginning of the year. I'm going to go a little bit through some current year revenues with you. As you know, the town went through a revaluation of properties process last year, actually the whole county did. And the town adopted what I would consider to be the most revenue neutral rate I have seen. I mean, you could not have come more close to having perfection if it was your intention to, you know, pick a rate that gave you the exact amount of dollars as the year before. And that's what happened with you all. Your townwide levy in fiscal year 20 was $3,615,846. I mean, and you were right on this, right on the dime for fiscal year 21. I mean, hardly any difference at all. Same thing with your MSD A and B. In fiscal year 20, your levy was $997,061 and again, $997,000 in fiscal year 21. If you had tried to do that hard, it probably wouldn't have happened. It's just amazing. It's amazing that the dollars could have been so close. This has been an interesting year for some of your biggest revenue sources. So I want to go through with you where you are on those. Occupancy tax collections are a big revenue source for the town. Countywide, those revenues are up 25.68% for the six months ended December of 2020. We have had an amazing fall on the Outer Banks, certainly not like what the rest of our nation is seeing. So we can feel very blessed for that. Duck's portion of those occupancy tax revenues is up 21.7% or $209,986. We've collected 80% of our budget just with the six months ended December. The sales tax collections for Duck are up 6%. Again, a nice increase. That's about $49,757 for the six months ended November 20. And that's November versus December, just because of the way you all count those revenues, you all actually start with May in this fiscal year, the actual May collections. And you've collected 77.5% of our, of your budget. Land transfer tax collections in Dare County have been phenomenal. Countywide, the collections are up 95.2% for the six months ended December 2020. I think I just heard that January collections were up a very similar amount. Duck's portion is up 92.8% or $93,578. You've already exceeded your budget. You're at 107% of what you budgeted. So again, three major revenues and all of those very strong. Couple of other revenue sources. The town collects what's called a utility franchise tax, which comes from the state. You're on target with your budget. I think you budgeted around $400,000. It's coming in right as you budgeted. You've collected 53.6%, so just a little over 50% at half the year. Your building related revenues for the seven months ended January 2021 are up 42.6% or And we've collected about 76% of our budget. In grant revenues, you had budgeted a couple of grant revenues. One from the National Fish and Wildlife for the Living Shoreline, and you budgeted another one from the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau for a sidewalk project. Those two grants, we're not going to see those coming in this fiscal year because they're on hold for a consolidated coastal resiliency project, and you'll be hearing a lot more about that over the next two days. Of course, we're not going to get those revenues, but we're also not going to spend the offsetting money. So the budgetary impact will be zero on that. And then the final revenue I want to talk about sadly is investment earnings. Investment earnings have plummeted. Last March, the rates just really dipped, and we are earning practically nothing on our funds that are invested. I think we got about $95,000 last fiscal year. We'll probably be lucky to get about $4,000 this year. There's just not a lot of options out there. You all have your money invested with the cash management trust. Again, it's, and it's not just the town. If we went to the bank and tried to invest our own money, it's, we would get similar, similar rates, which are kind of sad. Any questions on any of those revenues? So what I wanted to do was I wanted to go through an exercise of projecting out where I think you're going to end the, this fiscal year, fiscal year 21. So what I did was I've estimated all of your revenues. I knew what they were at December 31st, and I wanted to project those out through June 30th. So what I did, just to give you a little bit of background on that, I had to figure out, you know, what kind of percentages I was going to use for these next six months. And I didn't want to look at March to May of fiscal year 20 last year because those were really bad months for us because of COVID. COVID hit in March, so our revenues from March, April, and May were really not good here, those big revenues. So what I did was I actually went back to 19 and looked at those revenues, thinking that those would be a little bit more comparable because I think that we're still going to have, I think we're going to have a great spring here. So that's what I did for those revenues. And then the other revenues, I have conservatively estimated those based on actuals to date and prior year history. I just went back and looked at a couple of years of history on those. So the next slide shows your budgeted revenues versus your projections. Again, just want to say, I feel like I've been conservative on these. And when I say I've been conservative, I think that your actuals will end up actually being a little bit better than this. So to start at the top there, you budgeted $3,662 for your townwide property tax. Just because of some differences in how you budgeted those, that'll actually come in at $3,64681. And again, that will be similar to what you actually brought in for fiscal year 20. Your MSD property taxes are going to come in right on target with budget. Your sales tax, I'm looking at that coming in at about $1,550. Occupancy tax, I'm looking at that coming in at about $1,675. So you can see both of those are going to come in over budget. The land transfer tax, I think that's going to be almost double what you budgeted. Budgeted 372, I think you're going to come in closer to 655. I mentioned the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau grant for the path. We're not going to show that as actual revenue because that won't be coming in. Then there's the Dare County Beach Nourishment Debt. That's the amount that Dare County provides towards your beach nourishment debt. That comes in in May, so we'll be expecting that. You've already received $5,000 for your government access channel. That's a little reduction over what you usually get, but they, I think they said that was affected by COVID, how they distributed that. There was a small federal grant in there, not real sure what that was, so I didn't count that in our projections. The next one is the National Fish and Wildlife Grant for the Living Shoreline. Again, talked about that, not expecting that this year. Beer and wine's just a small amount, expecting that to come in at 1,700, which is similar to the prior year. Utility franchise taxes, anticipating those at what we budgeted. Building revenues, we budgeted 143, looking at 185 there. Mixed beverage and ABC, budgeted 51, and I'm looking at 61,794. And that's looking at what we've taken in over the prior years. And the last amount is other. That's going to come in under budget. Part of that is because of the interest earnings that are going to be less. And then also included in other or miscellaneous is where you all budget some money for some events. And obviously because of COVID back in July, August, September, you just didn't have that, those kinds of events, you know, that were bringing in any kind of sponsorships, those types of revenues related to those events. So, you know, your total revenues are, the budget's $9,509. I've got you projected to come in at 9.6. Keep in mind, that doesn't in total look alike a lot more, but you've got those two grants that are really going to kind of skew your numbers there. Again, we're not going to see those as projected in revenues, but we're also not going to see those on the expense side either.
And just add that, that would be about $530,000, a little over $530,000 that, you know, in the difference of what, with what Teresa was talking about with those two grants.
Thank you, Joe.
So those, those budget figures will just be rolled into the next fiscal year, correct?
And they may change based on your new projects.
Correct. But those are, those are grants that basically, they really won't change, will they? I mean, that's grant money that we've gotten for those projects, correct?
That's correct. And so what you'll see, we'll have those same exact figures in the, as we develop the budget for FY 2022, those will be in there as well. But the point is, we're not receiving that revenue this year, but it'll carry forward.
Thank you, Joe. So just a little bit on the expense side. We anticipate that most expenses are going to come in under budget. Again, the Phase 4 sidewalk and the Living Shoreline are on hold for the Consolidated Coastal Resiliency Project in 2122. And just so you know, I have estimated those expenses very conservatively. You're going to see when you look at my projections for the expenses that I, in most cases, I've just projected what was budgeted, you know, just for sake of making it a little simpler for the projection. But I think that most of those categories will actually come in under budget, which will mean more money to your bottom line. So I just want to run through the expenses for you. In general government, you budgeted 218, 290. I'm looking at that coming in about $230,000. That has to do with some insurance that came in over budget. You've got some professional services in there that weren't budgeted, so that's just going to come in a little over. Under administration, I have just projected that out to be what the budget is. Finances actually, sounds like a finance department, but really that's just the amount that you all pay Dare County to collect your taxes. And that's probably going to come in at about $72,000. Legal is at 420. I think you're probably going to come in closer to 475 on that. Public buildings, you budgeted 348, 872. I think you'll come in a little higher there. And that's because of some extra cleaning that you all had done related to COVID. Some of that has been cut back over the last couple of weeks. But earlier in the year, you were having some pretty intensive cleaning done of your public buildings. Information technology, I've projected that out to just what we budgeted. Same for police and same for fire. Inspections, same thing, projected what you budgeted. Same thing for ocean rescue. Transportation is where we're not showing that you're going to spend everything. That's, that's, that's those grants, exactly. Right. And that big project that's not going to take place. Environmental protection, I've budgeted that out, like you're going to spend it all. Beach protection, in addition to those four contracts I talked about earlier with CPE, you all had also budgeted maybe $120,000 above that for beach nourishment. I'm not really sure how much of that additional amount you're going to end up spending because you had those four projects that are probably going to carry us through to the end of the year. There may be some new ones, but I think we're going to have a little bit of return funds there. Planning, I have projected that out at what was budgeted. Parks, I have reduced that because that, again, that goes back to the event situation. Just, you know, not going to have those expenses because of COVID. And at this point, I've just left the contingency projection at zero. So your total budgeted expenses were $10,388,407. I'm projecting you're going to come in at $9,227,619. Again, conservative, I think it will probably be less. And so what does that mean to the bottom line? That's what this next slide is, what it's just a summary of those two slides, the revenues and the expenses. So I won't repeat all of the budget, all of the numbers here, but again, projecting $9,618,497 in revenues. You budget for a transfer from your beach nourishment, that looks like it's going to be about $1,239 to cover the expenses that we're going to spend this year. Fund balance appropriated, that's where you budget that you're going to use some of your savings. So you don't count those revenues again, it's just actually a budgetary number. So that's why there's no projection in that column. The expenses, planning for those to be about $9,227,619. Then we've got an offsetting transfer to beach nourishment, which is going to be about $1.3 million, which is going to give you overall revenues over expenses of $304,000. So what that means is you're really not using any fund balance because you're actually going to have revenues over expenses for this fiscal year, which is great. And so what does that overage mean for your fund balance? I think the first slide that I talked about today talked about your unassigned being at $5,634,882, and then you had a reserved portion that got you up to your $6,998,486. So what we do is we take that $304,000, we add that to your beginning total fund balance, and you're going to have a total fund balance at June 30th of $7,303. The big difference is going to be that your reserved amount is going to decrease. That's because that calculation that we have to do for the LGC to restrict is going to be less than it was last year. And what that does is, is it bumps that extra part up into the unassigned portion. So your unassigned portion is actually going to end up increasing by about $1 million And then this is where I'm projecting your capital reserve fund for beach nourishment to be, again, started at $1,578, and I think you're going to end at about $1,665. Does anybody have any questions on those projections?
Yeah, I do, Teresa. We got a FEMA grant, $2.9 million. We got a, another grant from the state for beach nourishment, $1.4. Do we realize those only in fact, when we go to the project next year?
That would be related to next year, and we'll cover that in the capital improvement presentation in just a little bit about how all those would apply to that project and what that means for us moving forward.
But they're holding those funds now, they have not been distributed, correct?
That's correct. They have not been distributed. And in particular, the large, the $2.9 million FEMA money is a reimbursement, and that, that's important for us to consider how we go about that. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that.
Okay. Monica's got a question coming in.
Yes, hi, thank you, Teresa. Could you go back to that slide where we talk about the decrease of the, I'm not going to, I didn't jot it down, just the last slide you went to where, where we talk about putting more money into the unrestricted fund balance by a million because we've reduced the, the restricted, or the, what I'm considering the, the, the beach nourishment fund is going down. Is the beach nourishment fund going down just because that's what we're spending in the year for it? And we're sort of a year ahead on the collection, on what we're needing to appropriate. You said that the, and I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm using the right terms here, so I just want to get a little bit more definition on exactly why the restricted went down to the 600 level, and then we've bumped that into the unrestricted. If you could just touch on that, please.
I will, and that's a good question, Monica, and that's actually this slide right here. And this is just a little bit of accounting wizardry.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll try to explain it the best I can, but that calculation that the state makes us use to restrict a portion of our fund balance, what we have to do is we have to restrict certain receivables that we have, that we're showing at the end of the year. And so at the end of last year, we had about, we probably had about $900,000 in receivables. And that was revenue that we had recognized last year, but we hadn't actually received it. So the state doesn't really let us include that in our, while it's a part of our total, they don't let us include it in our unassigned. But immediately when you all collect that money in July and August, it becomes unassigned, you know, once you've collected it. And we're not anticipating that restricted portion to be as much at June 30th of 21 because your receivables are not going to be as high at the end of 21. A big piece of that has to do with a grant that you all had that was a receivable last year. I think it was about a $280,000 grant from the Visitors Bureau. So that kind of bumped that restriction up last year. And because we're going to have less receivables, that restriction's going to come down this year. Sorry if that doesn't make total sense, but also this slide has nothing to do with beach nourishment. This is totally just your general fund. Again, nothing to do with beach nourishment on this slide. Does that help a little bit, Monica?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I, I, I'll tuck that away, and I think it's helpful to know that that really has nothing to do with the nourishment fund. It's just more of, like you say, a receivable and the way that the local government commission makes you allocate those so that you're not, again, I know we're, we're really looking at a high fund balance, you know, not as, not, not exactly where we want it to be, but it's always helpful to see what our fund balance is. And so this is helpful for me to parse it out away from the beach nourishment fund. So thank you.
And I, and I do think from a big picture looking, that, you know, from the big picture, you know, I think what's important is, yes, your unassigned is going to increase, and it's certainly going to put you in a better position at the end of 21 over 20.
Okay, thank you so much.
So now I'm going to move into fiscal year 2022. I told Joe I was going to stick with those things that I knew. There's an awful lot about the town that I still have to learn, so you may have seen a lot, your financial presentation may have been different in the past, but I don't have the knowledge that somebody in the past may have had. So again, I tried to stick to those things that, that I'm good at. So I'm going to talk a little bit about fiscal year 2022 planning. And I call these budget drivers, things that are going to affect your budget in fiscal year 2022. The first thing is, I just want to take a look at your townwide taxes, just kind of as a review as you go into your 2022 budget planning. This is your current tax valuation, $1,840,000. You know, is that going to change a little bit from this fiscal year to next? It's possible you could have a small, you know, 1% increase in value. So what I wanted to do was tell you what an additional 1%, increase in that value would give you in dollars. And that's $36,000 if you had a 1% increase. One penny right now on your levy is about $184,000 on your townwide tax rate. Same thing on the MSDA. Your current value is $496,000. You've got a current MSD tax rate of $12.96 per hundred. So your current levy is $643,000. One cent is $49,618. And if you had a 1% increase in your value in that MSDA district, that would generate Again, MSDB, current valuation is $124,000. Your current tax rate in that MSD is $28.5 cents per hundred dollars of valuation. Your current levy is $354,461. One cent is $12,435. A 1% increase in that tax value would get you about $3,500 more. So we're not talking about a lot of dollars there in growth. Another big revenue source for you all is occupancy tax. As you know well, that's a 6% tax. 1% goes to the Visitors Bureau, 2% goes to beach nourishment, and then 3% goes to Dare County and the towns. And how that gets split is Dare County gets 32% of that, and then the remaining 68% is distributed to the towns in Dare County based on your prorata share of tax levies. And I'm sure that you all hear about this year after year and how your tax levy in comparison to other towns' tax levies has a big impact or can have a big impact on those revenue The land transfer tax is a 1% tax on property sales in Dare County. 65% of that goes to Dare County, and the remaining 35% is distributed to the towns in Dare County based on, again, in Dare County based on, again, the same prorata share of tax levies among towns. This is kind of interesting. So because of revaluation, everybody has a new tax levy now. As you saw back in the beginning, you all had a very revenue-neutral rate, and you brought in, you're going to bring in the same tax levy this year as what you brought in last year. The other towns are actually going to have higher tax levies. And in the research that I've done, it seems that the other towns, when they did their revenue-neutral rate, they estimated their appeals at about 5% of the total valuation, and Duck did not do that. So what that does is, because they estimated those appeals, they're actually going to end up with more dollars in their tax value. So while you all are going to remain relatively flat in your tax levy, the rest of the towns are going to go up. And so the question is, what kind of impact does that have on Duck? Because these levies are what are going to affect your revenues for occupancy tax, sales tax, and land transfer tax next year. So I'm not going to read these numbers off, but what's important is that in fiscal year '21, the year that we're in, you all had 13.31% of the levy. I'm sorry, 14.01% is where you are. With these new levies, you're actually going to drop to about 13.31%, which is a 0.7% decrease. And you can see, for you all to lose 0.7, you can see what the other towns are gaining. They're all gaining a little bit on that. That make sense? And again, these are just estimates. I called the towns and got these numbers from them, so, you know, it may turn out that they're just a little bit different than this, but probably not a whole lot.
Teresa, like Southern Shores is probably going to put MSDs in place. That impact won't come for another year, though, right?
It won't, and I've actually got that in a later slide, so that's a great question.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So you might be interested, what is that 0.7% reduction going to do to your revenues next year? Occupancy tax, you know, it's hard because there are so many things that go into the formula. Are you going to have growth in the revenue? You know, you possibly could, so what I did was figuring no growth. If we take a 0.7% decrease, that could cost you all about $80,000 on occupancy tax. And then land transfer tax. This has been such an amazing year, I would be hard-pressed to think that we were going to have land transfer taxes like we did this year, next year. So I didn't want to base that on this year's collection, so I actually based it on a lesser amount. But depending on where those land transfer taxes come in, you're going to have a decrease there as well, and I've estimated that to be about $20,000. So land transfer tax and occupancy tax, that is just based on tax levies among the towns. The sales tax is a little bit different. That includes the county's valuation in it, and I don't, I didn't have the county's valuation, but it would be reasonable to assume that you're going to have some reduction in that as well. I don't have an exact dollar amount, I think it's just too soon to tell. Dave Clausen does a lot of calculations on that and sends those out to the towns, and that will be coming out probably over the next couple of weeks. So I've just added there that that sales tax is distributed based upon the towns and the county. And then the portion of the sales tax that comes from the increased valuation due to the MSD, that's actually restricted for beach nourishment. And again, I'm expecting a small decrease in fiscal year '21. And the state does that on the MSD restriction, on the sales tax, because that's a state revenue. You don't have any kind of restriction like on your occupancy tax or your land transfer tax, because those are not state revenues. Wanted to just give you a little layout of what your existing debt maturities are. We've got one year left on the current beach nourishment project. Next fiscal year will be the final payment on that. And then we've got five years left on the municipal building, and you can see that that loan was set up with declining payments in the last couple of years. So that'll be good, just knowing some of the things that you're planning moving forward. It'll be good to have that declining debt in those last couple of years because you may be bringing on some other debt for some new projects. And then you've got one equipment lease that's outstanding that's got two years left on it. And I know that there is, there are some, some talk of some new equipment and some new lease purchases there. I just wanted to go over a couple of budget considerations for fiscal year 2022. I think I've talked about this, expect reduction in occupancy, sales, and land transfer taxes due to changes in proportionate share of ad valorem tax levies. You're looking at a construction and financing of a public safety building. I believe there are some new positions that might be considered. There are some capital purchases, which Joe will be going over that a little bit later. And then I just wanted to point out that, yeah, you are one year ahead on your MSD, and if you had any thoughts of taking that MSD away this year, I don't know that you do, and I'm not saying you do, I just want you to know what the impact would be on your occupancy and your land transfer taxes. It's about $480,000 a year. So if you did away with your MSD, you'd also be losing $480,000 in occupancy and land transfer tax revenues. You'd also be losing some sales tax as well. I can't calculate that for you today. And then just going a little further than fiscal year '22, and this goes back to what Mr. Kingston was just talking about, Southern Shores, and I think also Dare County will probably implement an MSD in fiscal year '22 for new beach nourishment projects. Southern Shores has one, and then I think there's one, it's either Buxton or Avon, I'm not, Avon maybe. So just for planning purposes, we just need to be knowing that once they add those levies, you know, once they add those MSDs, that's going to increase their levies, and it's going to, again, change the proportionate levies. And then those will go into effect in fiscal year '23. So just something to keep in the back of our mind as we're planning. And that is what I have for you today.
Excellent.
Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. So for someone who says she knows very little about the town, and I thought she did a wonderful job of really distilling the key components of budgeting for us as far as really giving us some good information, the most relevant pieces for you to think about as we're moving forward. So again, Teresa, we appreciate you helping us out on a more day-to-day, week-to-week level over the past half of a year, but also the extra time you've spent on this is very helpful for all of us. So thank you again.
Actually, I have one more question. You said on the MSDs, if we were eliminate them, the impact would be about $480,000?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be the 997 that we collect every year? Or?
Well, yes, and you lose the.
I'm sorry, I was just thinking.
So yes, you would lose the MSD, but because that MSD, that million dollars that you collect is included in your levy, it would be coming out of your levy, and it would decrease the percentage that you get on the occupancy and land transfer tax and the sales taxes.
So the 480 is only related to the associated taxes that the percentage?
So based upon what the rate is, it could be anywhere from 0 to $480,000 impact.
Yeah.
If we reduce down the MSD rates.
Yes, you would directly lose almost $1 million in revenue by not collecting the taxes, but you would also lose an additional, probably at least half a million total from what you would otherwise collect from those revenues.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
We have a base document that all of the council members should have received, our capital improvements plan. Lori had sent those out after I was able to complete putting those together, so I believe those went out on Tuesday morning. We're going to follow the same, let's see, same order we have in here. So what I've done, put together a presentation that briefly highlights all of the elements contained in this capital improvement program. It is, it should be in the same order as this if you want to follow along in that document. So. Lost our little bulb on the front there. Anyway, we'll begin with the elephant in the room there with beach nourishment. So again, the intent of that project, of course, is to, you know, replace beach erosion, to stabilize our dunes, protect our oceanfront properties as well as those that are in close proximity, and also to improve our public beach experience. You know, so much of why people visit Duck is because of the quality of that experience that they have. So I won't go into any kind of lengthy speech on that, but a lot of very, very good reasons why we've got into this project. So what we're looking at, just to summarize, our estimates show nearly an $8 million project cost, $7,963,200. Out of that, expected project cost, we have nearly $3 million of that being paid by FEMA reimbursement. So this is sand that we have documented that was lost during Hurricane Dorian. We've been working with FEMA staff now for, you know, over a year on this, and we anticipate that this is the amount we can expect. The key to this is that this is reimbursement, which means we have to spend that money before we could then be reimbursed, and our experience with FEMA is a fairly mixed bag. You know, we can, we might get that money back in six months. It might be, some of you may know, we've had some of these things that have drawn out for over two years before we got back the money to repair some of our boardwalk improvements. So there is one thought, I put in parentheses underneath that, that one option we have for financing that is to take out a short-term loan that's a bridge loan, if you will, and that would be, and be anticipated to cost about $150,000 in interest, in financing costs, if we were to do that, rather than just paying that upfront out of the general fund or other revenue sources. So we can pull that out of the picture there. So really, what that leaves us is about $5 million left on this, on this project, you know, a little less than $5 million. So out of that, we have a $1.45 million grant we received, State Department of Water Resources, and that grant would go toward our portion of that remaining. And then we have the county's contribution. You'll recall, we had a presentation from County Manager Bobby Alton a couple of months ago where he talked about how the county was actually going to be reducing the towns' portion by the amount of the grants that we all received or have, you know, been dedicated for us at this point. And therefore, that leaves the county's portion at only a little bit over $1 million that they would be contributing toward this project. So with that in mind, the final balance that we need to finance for this beach renourishment is in that final bullet there, almost $2.5 million. So just a little under $2.5 million is what we need, the remaining amount that we need to finance. If we were looking at doing that over a five-year period, like we did with the original project, and financing it based on conservative rates that we could anticipate, we might get a better rate than this. But those payments would begin in fiscal year 2023, depending on when the project was bid and begins. But either, anyway, it'll happen, it'll almost certainly fall within that fiscal year, and that would be about $590,000 a year, including those financing costs, if we wanted to spread those out. Again, as we look at this project, we can look at other ways if the council chooses not to, you know, we could pay off a portion or, you know, that from other funds that the town has. Those are decisions you would have to consider at that time. But otherwise, the payments, they would begin in fiscal year 2023. So basically, we would roll right into that following this fiscal year. Other related projects, sand fencing, this is something we do on an annual basis, sand fencing and dune planting, the contract with Emerald Forest. These are supplemented by our volunteer beach grass planting program. But generally, we, and we have also lumped into this category some of the work that CPNE does, where they're doing the annual monitoring of the beach nourishment program. We're required to do that. We extend that to include the entire town beach, not just the nourished area. And with those costs for the surveying and annual monitoring, that, and all of the beach grass planting, sand fencing works out to be about $150,000 a year. So we've set that up as an annual expense in the capital improvement program. We do get about $24,000 a year from the county shoreline commission to help defray some of those costs.
Joe, what's the drop in full year '23? Is that CPNE because of the bridge beach nourishment? We dropped 40,000?
Yes, 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 and I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out. It is because during that fiscal year, some of those costs are rolled into the beach renourishment project itself, so we don't have to do a monitoring because we're doing that surveying as part of the bigger project. Good, good question, thank you. But that's why that is lower for that one year. Related things on the environmental side, looking at shoreline stabilization, there are two different projects that are in that CIP item, one of which we're looking at this coming fiscal year. That would be part of the BRIC grant, the living shoreline portion of that, estimated at $768,023. Half of that amount is funded by National Fish and Wildlife Foundation through a grant that we have committed to us. They were generous in deferring that grant till next year so that we were able to include that in the BRIC grant proposal. So we would be paying about half, so again, it works out to $384,011.25 would be our, technically, our portion on that.
Joe, another question, another question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't the general fund impact, therefore, be the $300,000 number rather than $768?
The way it's put in is the overall project cost, and then we, like, we have to pay that, and then we are reimbursed, so that comes back to us on the revenue side, but the expense is $768.
But on the general fund, wouldn't it be the net, the net number? And the project cost, you got the $768, but wouldn't the general fund impact be the net number?
We could set that up. I'll chat with my financial guru to see if that's the best way to do that.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. On that slide, Joe, the 238 that we see in fiscal 2023, can you just explain that number a little bit, one more?
That's coming next. So anyway, that was for the living shoreline. The 238 that we have, that would be the following. We, we've at least tentatively scheduled that for FY 2023, would be our project for the sills and stabilization off of the town park property. So that is a completely separate and distinct project from the living shoreline. So that is the, the estimate we have for that. It may be possible that we're able to find some grant money to help defray those costs. We'll see on, on that front. I'm still on the environmental side here. One of the other opportunities we've had is to take a look at our, our neighborhood flooding. We have a, we've submitted a grant application. We should receive word on, probably in April. This is a grant from the North Carolina Office of Resiliency and Recovery, a phased grant. We've talked about this several times. The, the budgeted amount here is, it comes over three fiscal years. You would have an initial year with a, with $30,000. A second, and that would all be paid for out of grant. Second year, we have a, an anticipated $40,000 grant. However, our costs are likely to be greater than that based on the, the project we're, we're looking at. If we're looking at doing a full-blown stormwater management study for a pretty good portion of the town, that's going to be a six-figure project. So while, while they're providing some significant funding, there would also be additional funding coming out of the, the town's pocket as well if we were to proceed with that project. And then finally, in the third year, we would be receiving $100,000 toward implementation from that grant. I've added a little bit of additional money moving forward in, in years after that because after we identify these concerns during that stormwater management study, we may have opportunities as a town to contribute to address some of these concerns moving forward. So we've just put some tentative money in there. And again, those are, this whole thing is intended to address some of our localized neighborhood flooding, those spots where we've seen some repetitive flooding, where things don't seem to drain off as quickly and trying to find solutions. So now we move into the fire department. I feel bad going through it. Donna's already covered these for you over the last period of months, done a great job of just kind of highlighting one of these each month as part of her presentation. Heck, I even stole her slides, so she was generous enough to provide those. But, so you'll hear a little bit more about this as well tomorrow. So I'm not going to spend as much time, but did want to walk through these for you quickly just so you have a feel of what they're, what they're looking at. This first one is the one that's seen the most change. It's, it's evolved over the last few weeks as we've really gotten down to the nitty-gritty. Our police and fire departments have had some really good conversations about the best way to move forward with our need to, to replace our existing 800 megahertz radios. As the council may be aware, with some new standards coming in through Department of Public Safety, by 2025, we, we basically have to replace most of our, if not all, of our existing radios to comply with those standards. So that being the case, both departments, in putting their heads together and thinking about the best way to do this, we have some different options with this. This isn't the only option. But the option we came up with was taking a look at going ahead and purchasing all of these radios for both departments at once in the coming fiscal year. The benefits, and they can speak a little more coherently about this when, when they have their opportunities tomorrow. But some of the real key benefits to that are, first of all, we're, we're spending that, and if we finance it, you know, there obviously are very good rates for that. But if we finance it, it, it becomes a steady amount over three-year payback period. In other words, we have a very defined, specific amount that can go in the budget for the council. So it's not up and down depending on how many we're replacing in a particular year. Secondly, and probably even more importantly, just has to do with the, the way that these radio, you know, if we're bringing this on, they're all going to be the same model radios. And that's important for a number of reasons, as far as the way the radios interact with each other, as far as needs for service, updates, parts and repairs. It's all going to be consistent. You know, we're not having four, five different models that were purchased over a period of years and have differences. So that consistency is really important for how these radios are, you know, their continued use and how they're updated in the future. So due to those elements, I thought it was a very, very good idea on their part in putting together this proposal and how we could do that. So within FIRE, their proposal would include replacement of 10 mobile radios. So those are ones that would be in vehicles. And then we have 34 portable radios, as well as two VHF mobile radios. And I'll, I'll, you know, Donna will get into that a little bit more during her presentation about the, the differences there and, you know, why they need different types. So with that, the, the total cost would be $259,525. Financed over three years would be a little over $88,000 a year. So went into more detail on that. I'll cover these more quickly here. Again, you've, you've seen some of these over the past months. $14,000 a year to replace, rotate in SCBA bottles and equipment, turnout gear. So wish and planning, we, we don't have handsome models like, like these who we can use for our presentations. Just one benefit FIRE has there. Fire hoses and, you know, accompanying appliances associated with those. And again, these are all replacing existing gear, making sure we've got good functional working gear that's in good condition when it's needed. Placement of thermal imaging cameras. This is not something you'll see every year, but the proposal does include a $12,000 expense for replacing the, the existing aging thermal imaging cameras. We have in 2022, $12,000, 2023, $12,000. And we have a couple of years before the next one would need to be replaced in 2026. Extracation equipment and, my photograph came out better than yours, right? You know, if you remember, this is, this, this was the photograph, the wonderful photograph she had that got, for some reason, got cut off in her presentation. So anyway, you can see the variety of different things. And what's being proposed here is, again, there's so many different things. You're not replacing everything every year, but you're replacing pieces of it as needed. Some years, it might be three or four smaller items. Some years, it might be, the bulk of it might be one expense for a larger piece of equipment. But what FIRE has tried to do here is to spread that out over a period of years, where they're looking at $7,000 in 2022 and 23. There's a year there where they, in '24, where they have not, you know, didn't see a need, but then again in 2025 and '26, $7,000 to spread out those and replace them as needed. Next items we're getting into are the, the vehicles. So we do have just a little bit of remaining payment on the deputy chief vehicle. That's what you see in the, the early year there of your, in the capital improvement program. And then in 2025, it will be coming up on the, the timeframe for replacement of the fire chief vehicle at that point. And again, that's based on an eight-to-10-year service life, which is fairly, fairly lengthy, actually. I think that's a very conservative number if you look at what a lot of fire departments are using for that. At that, we anticipate that would be about a $77,000 expense. And again, that can be spread out over payments. Generally, we've used a three-year payment schedule for financing those. So you see those toward the end of that CIP item in the later years. Engine 111, nothing more to say. This is an engine purchased in 2014. There were, is financed over 10 years. So we still have some remaining payments over the next few fiscal years, next three, at $57,222 a year to complete the payments on that vehicle. The next one is the, this is the newer proposal then. So this would involve replacement of engine 11, estimated at a $750,000 cost. That would not be this fiscal year, but next, that this is being proposed. This would be for FY 2023. If we choose the similar option of financing this over 10 years at a very conservative interest rate, again, we may be able to do better than this, but using a conservative rate, that would be about $97,500 a year. And again, that would be spread out over a 10-year period, beginning as, potentially as soon as FY 2023, depending on when we actually take possession of the vehicle. It could begin in 2024.
Joe, once again, 750 by 10 is 75,000. What's, is that much purchase, I mean, that much financing?
Correct, correct. If you look at, over a 10-year period at the financing, it ends up being 975,000. And again, we're using a very conservative rate there. But over a 10-year period, it ends up being that. So now moving out of FIRE, we have one item here relating to our parks recreation. So it's for playground equipment. What we've plugged into the, the draft CIP is replacement of our existing playground equipment in FY 2023. If we look at the anticipated life of that, that really could end as soon as this year if we're doing that. But we've done some inspection and, you know, pulling and tugging and, you know, evaluating, you know, how everything's held together. And it appears to be in good, solid shape right now. We, we've done an occasional spot replacement. You may recall, we had replaced the climbing wall portion of the existing equipment just a few years back. But overall, in looking at that, we think there's some likelihood that at some point in FY 2023, we would look at replacement of the existing equipment. It doesn't mean it would be exactly the same, you know, look exactly the same or have the same features, but something comparable. So we're looking at a cost of about $85,000 to replace what we've got, that, you know, something with similar elements, similar scale. The other thing we've done in the draft CIP is take a look at potential expansion of that. And the proposal in here bumped that out two years. We have a small amount in the middle there that would be related to design and maybe a little bit of site preparation in FY 2024. But then in FY 2025, we have an amount there that would be for an expansion. And again, that's something for the council to consider as you look at the, the needs and services that you want to provide to our residents and visitors to Duck. We certainly have an opportunity. I know Christian Legner, Sandy Cross and I have all looked at some really interesting opportunities we would have for that, should that be something the council wishes to pursue. So that, it's proposed that way. Depending on how the council wants to look at this, you could move that expansion sooner. You could push it off or not do it at all, of course. But, you know, that, so the, the timeframe of it is certainly flexible as well. But we've proposed it in that way to spread it out a little bit. So now we get into police. Already gave you the background on the 800 megahertz radio, so I'll just let you know what police is proposing, are 15 mobile radios, would be vehicle, mounted, and 14 portable radios. So as part of their proposal, that, that adds up to $151,000 and change. If financed over three years, would work out to $51,630 a year. So between the two, if we add them together, total project cost is about $410,000 for radios. And that lump sum that would then be spread out and, again, with the financing costs, we'd be looking at, right at almost $140,000 a year over three years, spread out between the two departments. And again, they'll focus a little more on, on that in their presentations.
Just an unrelated question, but over the years, we've had problems with the 800 transmission. Is that better now with the transmitter that we have here or the booster that we have here in the town? That was just curiosity question. Joe needed a break.
We're all looking at each other, who wanted to answer that. There's still some issues. We're still fringe towards Xanderling and all. So sometimes for operations, we'll switch to a non-repeated channel. That's all I'll say for FIRE. I don't know if it's any better for police. And tomorrow, what we've done is, is Trey is our radio expert. He's put together four or five slides on the radios and why. So if that helps tomorrow between presentations or after both of them, he can, he can update you on why we have to give this.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's anything we could do to boost that, as long as we're spending that kind of money to boost that transmission, so. We can wait, we can wait till tomorrow.
I'd just like to add to that as a, a question that we can talk about tomorrow with the radios. Given the difficulties we've had with radios in the past and just the coordination with the county, I would really want to know and feel comfortable that this solution is something that is, you know, going to last a little bit and is really going to tie in. I get a little nervous, frankly, when I see that it's 2025 is the implementation. Perhaps I'm not understanding that correctly for the county. But anyway, I just want to make sure that the solution, it really will, 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 will coordinate us with the county this time. So that's just something we can, you could address tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, but we'll cover that specifically. Thanks, Monica.
Right, other items in the police department's proposal. Replacement of their, they have some AED equipment right now, but that is, is aging and they're seeking to replace that with the most, with more current technology there. So what they've got is a $18,300 expense in FY 2022 for replacement of those, that emergency equipment. Another item, seeking to replace. And this doesn't come on until being proposed in FY 2025. The police department is seeking to update their records management system with new software, again, in FY 2025. Would certainly, one of the key aspects of that is improving their data sharing capabilities with other law enforcement agencies. So that would, it's anticipated at a $75,000 cost. There may be some possibility there of defraying that cost through some grant opportunities. So I'm sure chief will be looking into that as well. But that, that's something a few years out, but in the plan. Automatic license plate readers. I think the council's well-versed in how valuable a tool this has been for the police department, as well as other law enforcement agencies throughout the county and beyond in dealing with, you know, just a variety of issues, you know, things that we've been able to resolve that we likely would not have been able to otherwise. However, the ALPRs do have, you know, to say, a relatively short lifespan. You know, they are things that are outside. They're subject to all of the weather that the Outer Banks brings. And also, over time, this is something like, much like the computers in front of us, we see. see fairly rapidly improving technology. And so we do want to keep those up to date as well for that reason. For those reasons, we are looking at replacing the ALPR at the south site, $48,000 expense in FY 2023. So that would not be this coming fiscal year, but the next. And then the north site in 2024 at a cost of estimated $40,000. Patrol vehicles. So obviously something right at the, at the heart of, you know, what our officers need. This is probably their, you know, maybe their, one of the primary tools that they use in, you know, patrolling our community. What you have here is, again, a series of replacement over, over time. You do have a larger amount, the largest amount in the coming fiscal year. I did put in parentheses, just so you're aware, what we're talking about there would be three replacement vehicles for existing officers, but the purchase of two new vehicles associated with the department's request for two new officers. So that is why that figure is what it is in FY 2022. We see additionally then, there would be scheduled replacement for vehicles in 2023, two in 2024, and three in 2025. Again, these are purchases that are typically financed over a three-year period. So the actual payments are reduced from the, the amounts you see in there and spread out over a little more of a timeframe. So within the, the budget impact, it's a little more consistent than what it looks like if you're just looking at the, the vehicle costs. This does also include, I guess it's important to point out, particularly for these, the next couple of fiscal years, this also includes some of those finance payments for vehicles that have already been purchased. Mobile data terminals. So these are the, the laptops that the, the officers have with them. And this proposal would include replacement of some of those in fiscal year 2023 at a cost of 24,000 and fiscal year 2024 at a cost of 28,000. So again, these are items, it's noted that have an average lifespan of four years. These are ruggedized computers, of course, with the environment that they're in. And again, we need to keep those as up to date as we can, so the officers are provided with a good resource there. Traffic safety devices, fancy term for, for cones and barricades. So these are things, you know, that we've certainly used frequently. We haven't had as much need this past year as we haven't had as many events, but obviously something we use quite frequently when we are involved in, in physical events, which is certainly part of our hallmark here in DUC. So police department is seeking to replace these. We're looking at, at this in fiscal year 2024, so a few years down the road, but replacing the, the cones and topper cones and barricades as needed. And additionally, replacing the, the large flatbed trailer that we use for storing and transporting these items. So again, these are used for town events as well as emergency situations, you know, where they do need to redirect traffic. We've even done this occasionally associated with town construction projects. And finally, we have an item that's, that in actuality is shared between police and fire, but we've had it, we've put it under police because that's where the insurance is going to come from in this case. So we just felt that made a little more sense. We have an older trailer, 2006, an enclosed cargo trailer that transports emergency equipments, equipment when needed, such as our pumps when we've had to pump floodwaters, but other, you know, other kind of tools, generators, other, other things. So it's a multi-purpose trailer used for those purposes. We're looking at this in 2023 at replacing this trailer, and there would be a $10,000 expense anticipated due to the, simply due to the, the relatively low cost. That isn't something we would anticipate carrying out. It would just be a one-time expense in that year. So now come to the, that was high, see, that, that should have come with the vehicles, not the, not the trailer. The trailer doesn't make noises like that. So now we get into the, the public buildings, public improvements. So what we have here, we've got our town hall and meeting hall. So what you see in your, your CIP are the remaining payments for the purchase. Teresa covered these earlier, so I won't reiterate that, but it, she made a very important point that those payments, the way they were structured, reduced by about $90,000 in fiscal year 2024. So we have two more years at a little higher amount, about 240,000 or so. And then we have, then it, then it goes down pretty substantially. So we're able to pick up, again, about $90,000 a year in the final years. The, that 15-year financing will be fully paid off in 2026. So we're now seeing, we have nothing beyond that. So the, this capital improvement plan has the full payments where that would be paid out by the end of the, this plan. Public safety building, I can maybe, I don't know what Chris presented last year on this, but we could just repeat it because we unfortunately haven't seen a whole lot of movement on the Corps of Engineers side. And, and that, that may be oversimplifying things. There's certainly been a few important steps that have occurred, but as of this moment, we're, we don't have a lease in hand for this property. So again, what we're looking at here would be reaching a lease agreement with the US Army Corps of Engineers to lease a little bit larger property than what the existing public safety building sits on, be located just a little bit to the north. The original plan was to build this wonderful new facility and then tear down the old facility, restore that site and turn it over to the Corps. In some of our more recent conversations with them, they have pitched the idea of us actually turning the existing building over to them for their use in the future, which is, on the financial side is, you know, probably nothing but a positive for us. We don't have to pay the costs of tearing it down, tearing up all the asphalt, restoring the site and that type of thing. So, you know, that, from that standpoint, it's a benefit, but it's certainly thrown an additional loop into the timing of this. And that we already had a, you know, an environmental impact study that was done. And, you know, we were on the cusp of getting into contractual negotiations, and now this has made that more complicated. But it is something that we certainly respect their interest in and look forward to working with the Corps on, you know, on that prod, that aspect of the project moving forward. Hopefully that's something that they can be resolved and be made part of their proposal in the near future. So what we've got in here is similar to what we've basically just slid everything forward a year. So we do have $450,000 in, you know, produce more detailed design and engineering. So these would be where we get back in with RRMM, the architects, and begin working with them on the actual final design for the building, the plans, the permitting that would be a part of that process. We, again, certainly hope that that will occur within this coming fiscal year. And then we can look at the, the timing. We would anticipate timing for construction. Obviously, a very large facility that'll take some time, but the bulk of that would likely be in 2023, fiscal year 2023. And we have a placeholder figure there of $6 million for the construction of this building. Obviously, that would be fine-tuned as RRMM does that detailed design. So at that amount with the $6 million financed over 15 years, again, at a fairly conservative rate, what we would be looking at would be $560,000 a year if we do a 15-year repayment, similar to what we did for the town hall and meeting hall here. And finally, with the, in the town buildings, we, we do have a maintenance storage building. So this is something that as we take a look at bulking up our maintenance program, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about this tomorrow. But, you know, over the years, we've now been a town for, we're coming, you know, basically on our 19th year. And over the years, we've developed buildings, boardwalk, all kinds of other improvements, you know, with sidewalks, retaining walls. So we now have a lot of different things that as a town, we are now responsible for maintaining. And that's a shift from where we were at, you know, 10 years ago. That wasn't a part of our program. You know, we really didn't have to think a whole lot about that because first of all, we didn't have as much on the ground. And secondly, it was all brand new. So it didn't need a whole lot of maintenance, other than, you know, paying for the utilities and things like that and occasional repair. But now we're at a point where we're, we need to begin thinking about this strategically, about how we're going to address some of these things moving forward. Part of that potentially would be construction of a, a maintenance building. The thought is, at least tentatively, this is something I could go over by the parking lot just north of us, by the, the park and the, the access to the boardwalk over there. This would be a multi-purpose building in addition to housing, you know, having a small office, bathroom there. But the main purpose of this would be for storage. So this would be, we'd house equipment, tools, maintenance supplies, but could also be a place where we could begin to expand. And anybody who has seen our file room on the first floor of town hall knows that that's a very constricted area. And at some point, we're going to need to find other, other options for that. And this can also serve that purpose as well. So, so that's a thought. We've, we've estimated this, you know, we put it a few years out, 2024. So we'll have time to discuss this a little further. The estimated cost would be for a metal building. The, the stock photo I've got there almost certainly isn't as attractive as what we would do if we chose to do this. That, that amount is based on a metal building with some upgrades to have a, a better, certainly front facade appearance. So that, that, that's where we came up with that number, as well as the site work that would accompany that building. And then we did have a few other little odds and ends here with the duck trail. We've talked about a phased replacement of this. We've been working on that now for a number of years. If you'll recall, we had some items to complete at the end of this fiscal year. We had some discussions a few months ago where there was, the remaining cost to complete the existing concrete portion of the trail from where it stops right now down south to Oystercatcher Lane was a little, it was about $108,000. So we've proposed 110 for this fiscal year to complete that stretch. That would include both regular and a section of permeable concrete. And then we've, we've put in as a placeholder, and this is about what it's been, the future budget of $100,000 a year to continue to replace sections of the duck trail with concrete. And though those would be prioritized according to the, you know, we're looking at the, the areas that need the work the most, where we've got root intrusion or a little more wear and tear in certain areas. And we would prioritize that on an annual basis, discuss that with the council about what areas were being prioritized, but setting aside 100,000 a year moving forward. Stormwater management. We had a couple of immediate items that we were looking at here, one of which is addressing an area up in the northern part of Duck Trail. Well, we've done some of the replacement, but were unable to do related stormwater management improvements. We would hope to be able to accomplish that. So we've set aside 25,000 in the comfort proposed in the coming fiscal year. And then we have 65,000 for improvements that would be in Duck Village near We Winks, this kind of connected system we've got with We Winks, Duck Ridge Village Court neighborhood. And when I say We Winks, I'm talking about the whole center on both sides of the road there, where we still see some, some stormwater issues from time to time, but improving that system as well as the outfall at, at Duck United Methodist Church. And that's estimated at 65,000. We've, are looking at that in 2023. Pedestrian improvements. We have our fourth final phase that's part of the brick grant project that stretched between Resort Realty and the existing crosswalk at Sunset Grill. Again, we've got some figures in there as it relates to building that project independently. Again, if it was, became part of that brick grant, if we are successful with that, those costs would be reduced substantially, the cost to the town. But we do have a grant, again generously deferred a year by the Dare County Tourism Board to allow us to consider that in FY 2022. The reason we've put that figure and the living shoreline in as separate projects is that if we do not obtain the brick grant, it is our intent to proceed with those projects anyway without the road elevation. So that's why we wanted to budget for them at their full amount with the understanding that if we get the brick grant, we won't have anywhere near as much money coming out of the, out of the town's coffers if we're successful. And that leads, ties right into that with our NC Highway 12 elevation project. So again, what we're looking at here is elevating the roadway to a point that would be about a foot above the, our, the floodplain elevation for that stretch. The, the limitation on that, the reason we're not looking at doing anything more substantial than raising it, you know, we're talking about no more than three feet at any point, probably about two feet or less for the bulk of the project, is simply with what it ties into. As you go further south, or in particular, the elevation of the road as it comes through Duck Village is only at an elevation of, you know, little, right at about five. So there's no point in bringing this section up to an elevation of seven, for instance, because it would just cause problems further down the road, literally in this case. So anyway, that's the intent there. This was identified as the most vulnerable stretch of roadway, the most vulnerable public, piece of public infrastructure in that vulnerability assessment conducted by Western Carolina University that we received about a year ago. And this, we had an opportunity through this brick grant to address that with a very substantial grant. The cost, if we pull this out of the overall, would be about a $1.2 million cost, which isn't something that I think the town was looking at shouldering. But with this federal assistance would be something that we could, we could accomplish in a much, much sooner timeframe than we ever would have having to work with DOT. Retaining walls. This, this is a new thing that we have. You know, we've had these programmatic items for stormwater in years past for Duck Trail. And in a way, this is consistent with Duck Trail, but this is something that we've identified. You recall our intern Savannah Newbern, Sandy Cross and I had worked on this because it's something we had identified that is our responsibility to maintain along the Duck Trail. And we noticed that there were a number of existing retaining walls that were not in the, the best condition, were going to need replacement. And we've decided to incorporate this into the CIP rather than And we've decided to incorporate this into the CIP rather than doing it piecemeal. Um, we've already addressed one of these with the grading down at Four Seasons. That was a smaller project. But what we're proposing are, um, putting some money, we have a little bit larger initial year expenditure estimated at sixty thousand dollars for FY twenty twenty-two to address walls in poor condition north of Pin Tail Drive. That's the section where we have, um, I think some, a lot of people refer to it as the bus stop, that, the, the little indentation there, where a little seating area there. But also some additional walls, um, there's one south of Norbanks Drive between the public safety area and Norbanks, and then a very short one that'll probably just involve removal of the wall and regrading just south of Tuckahoe Drive. Those would be those initial projects we'd be looking at next fiscal year. And then we just have a, a few more years that we would look at. We've estimated just as a placeholder about thirty thousand dollars a year. We would probably come back to you in future years with specific projects and specific amounts, but it works out to about thirty thousand dollars a year to address the other retaining walls that have an immediate need. We don't anticipate that this is something that's going to need to continue to go on, um, outside of this four or five year period. In other words, we'll have a point at which we don't, we're caught up and we won't need to spend anything on that. Um, bef, you know, it'll probably be a number of years before we have others that needed to come online. A lot of the retaining walls are brand new, associated with the pedestrian improvements in Duck Village, for instance.
Joe, could I just ask a question on, on, and it'll prob, this is great to see this planning ahead for this kind of failure or need for replacement. And are you envisioning, um, more retaining walls? I think I heard you say, well, obviously we changed the look of the one in Four Seasons, and then you might've mentioned we were going to reduce or remove the one in, in Tuckahoe. So am I understanding that it's maybe not always just a replacement of an existing wall, but some kind of different approach to holding back the, the dirt?
Yeah, so, um, we, we do not anticipate constructing any new walls at this point. So in other words, what we have is likely what we'll have going forward. I, you know, I can't, won't ever say never, but, um, you know, I'm just, you know, looking at the situation along the entirety of the Duck Trail, there really aren't a, a lot of other areas where we would need to look at constructing something new, you know, as far as having slopes that would need that. Um, so there are instances, particularly we had, where we have very low walls, where we would look at, where we would actually remove the retaining wall, just grade it out and grass it and stabilize it, and, and that will work. So, you know, the, these are things we've had engineers look at. We've met with Millstone Marine, who's the one who constructed the retaining walls associated with the pedestrian improvements, and gotten their input as well in this from the contractor's point of view, um, as far as what's needed and what's not. So most of these that we see that we have presently, and we've got a whole, um, we have an entire Excel sheet that lists all of the existing locations that, um, if anyone is interested, that is available at town hall. Um, but they would, most of these would be things that would be repaired or replaced over time. Um, we might lose a few of them, but probably not pick up anything more, if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. And that ends that portion, um, as far as going over the CIP and what's in that document you have to think about as far as the variety of different projects and initiatives that the departments have, have proposed for your consideration moving forward. Um, in your, your document, you can see, you know, we do have some overall numbers there. We have it broken down by fiscal year as far as the anticipated costs, uh, both when they're being brought online, as well as how those costs are spread out during your different budget years moving forward. So, um, we hope that that information is helpful to you and certainly be glad to answer any questions the council members might have at this time.
Joe, I'd like to say that's probably the best CIP presentation I've seen in the twelve years on council. Very comprehensive and, uh, and much better explanation from the standpoint of visuals as well as the projects. So I think that was excellent, uh, very well done. And I think also, Teresa, we thank you because I think you gave us a lot of perspective on a lot of the numbers that we don't normally look at either. So I think both presentations this morning, I think council will agree were excellent and provided a lot of good information.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for Joe and/or Teresa? They're being done, we're a little bit ahead of schedule and that's always good, so why don't we break until?
Did you want, I zipped you an email the other day about the option of going ahead with, wanted some more background information? Is that something you had wanted to do at this point? It had to do with, um, it was sort of a development overview, just talking about, it's information from some of the different organizations, Realtors, tourist board, home builders, things like that. I didn't know if that was something you had wanted to?
Refresh my memory because I'm drawing a blank.
We have another little presentation and it would, if I had to give it tomorrow, would probably cramp time for community development.
Let's do it.
So I, I had offered it, cause it, cause it's sort of in this larger framework, um, you know, as far as background information, and so if you, if you don't mind.
Oh, why don't you go for it?
I'd like to go ahead with that while we have.
Why don't you, let's, let's do it, we're ahead of schedule, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate.
It's always hard to get Joe off the podium.
Tell you what, compliments you one minute and turn around. Anyway, anyway. All right, um, so this is information, um, this is whittled down from what we've done in years past. It's a little more concise than what we've done in years past. Um, we've had a little bit more, we've given more time to fill, um, during the community development presentation. But again, this is just sort of, this is more in the context of background information, giving you a context for all of the decisions, helping you, Teresa did a good job of talking about it from a financial perspective, some of the things we're seeing. This will give you a little bit, maybe a little bit different perspective of what we see occurring and what we see going forward. So, that being said, um, we'll, we'll begin with some duck specific things as far as permit activity, development activity. Um, you can see there, um, I've highlighted a few numbers there in the right column as far as the percentage of change, and you can see some negative numbers. But what I want to point out to you is that we had two months with the bridges closed and not much going, you know, homeowners couldn't get down here, contractors who were here were still working and all that, but that really put a dent in, you know, the amount of activity that could occur in one of our primary times of year that we see that activity. And in spite of that, we were only down three point two percent in the overall number of permits. That's pulling out that, there was two months. We were only down that much. And we look at all the permits and inspections, what, what you'll see is that if we look at this as a per day, per week thing, we're actually pretty significantly up in all of those categories. So the amount of work, um, as far as the staff having to review plans, conduct inspections, um, all of those things that go along with building and development, you can see it was there. When we ran the, the models and the numbers, what you see there, that white line, so even though it took a dip, you can see the trajectory still going up as far as development activity, um, over the past five years. So breaking down the number of permits, um, as we have, I think we've mentioned this before in passing, um, twenty twenty, we saw nineteen new construction permits, an increase of fifty-eight point three percent after very, very steadily being between ten and twelve every, every year that I've been here prior. So just a really significant increase there. Um, and again, these other activity points are, you know, again, without those two months of activity as well. Looking at those permits and breaking those down, um, we did have a, you recall, um, within the last couple of years, we had a, pretty, took a pretty extensive look at our limitations on build, the scale of development in Duck. Um, lot of conversation, a lot of folks interested in that, um, Home Builders Association in particular. And set some rules, and you can see there, we have a, you know, we did have one house that has maxed out what we're, you know, that, that's the maximum anyone will be able to do anywhere in Duck. Would be a nine bedroom, eighteen occupant house, um, just a shade under five thousand square feet. Um, smallest residence, curiously enough, this is the first time in a long time we've had a two bedroom house built. So see a little bit on each end of the spectrum there. But the, the important takeaways here that I've, and I've highlighted this under median, but you can see it's not a huge difference from the average. There's a middle in there where we've been for quite some time, but what I, what I want to point out to you is that these, that the size of the houses being built are actually trending slightly downward, curiously enough. If we look at the overall picture, um, these are actually a little bit smaller than what houses were being built two years ago, three years ago. And so we're seeing a trend of that nature. The other thing we saw is that in, for a few years past, we had a lot of things on each end of the spectrum. We had our share of three, four bedroom houses that were smaller, we had our share of seven bedroom, six, seven bedroom houses that were much larger. This year, we've seen much more in the middle. We, we only have a couple outliers on the high and low sides. Almost everything being built is a five bedroom, you know, right, it's right up the middle of this, this alley, um, with what we're seeing built. So it's a, again, a, just a little bit different pattern of development that we're, we're Where are they being built? You can see little, we got a few clusters here, um, in the, south of the pier, you've got some items there, um, Schooner Ridge, Wampum, there's a little cluster of three there, um, Dune Road, Old Duck, just north of that, another little cluster. And then, um, as we move into the area south of Duck Village, you can see Seahawk, Tuckahoe, that area, you can see a larger cluster of about five down there. Um, don't, it's a little more just kind of here and there, um, in the areas north. So that what we're looking at here are the blue pins on that, not the other ones. You know, just a few sample pictures. So this is the kind of typical house that's being built right now in Duck. Um, some of the smaller ones that we see, that's what we're looking at there. Always want to talk about this, just as a reminder for the council and community about the, you know, where, where and when we see development activity, because it differs from every other department that we have. You know, police and fire, surf rescue, it can be overwhelming during the, the summer months when everybody's flocking to the beach. But for us, you can see, that actually is when our activity begins to taper down in June, July, August, September, you can see a very steady decline. And then where we pick up is when people get around to, okay, the season's over, I want to get my update, I want to, you know, I need to build that addition, needs to be done by spring next year, I need to get going. And that's when we begin to see the permits. You can see they peak in March, April, May, and this is over a five year period. So this isn't just, uh, you know, an anomaly or one year, this is over that period. So now just getting to that bigger picture, building trends, talking with the Home Builders Contractors have plenty of work, new construction, renovation, many builders are booked for the next year. People come to them, I want to build a house, I can't even talk to you for a year, you're not going to be, you know, that's when you're going to be scheduled, I'm booked up that much. Building material costs are rising fairly substantially, especially lumber, but, um, but to a great degree across the board. So that's something that they are facing and that's driving up construction costs. Um, they're facing labor shortages in most trades. Builders across the board are having difficulty finding that, so that's increasing sometimes the building timeframe. You know, if you can't, you know, if they've, if you've only got a handful of masons available on the Outer Banks, you know, it might be, you know, they can't just jump in when you want them. It might be two, three weeks before they can get over there. So they're seeing some challenges relating to that. And then where, they also did confirm that we, they are seeing an increase in permanent residents. A lot of what they're building and renovating is for people who are moving here to stay here, at least for the, this time period. Um, you know, we have extremely low interest rates historically, a lot of people looking at early retirement and have bumped that up, you know, they might've been looking five years from now, but now the timing was right for them if they're able to work from home. Now moving over to the realty side, Outer Banks Association of Realtors, um, spoke with Willow Kelly, and you can see here just incredible, I mean, some, some of these figures on the realty side are just incredible. You can see an increase of forty-four percent in the number of sales from, you know, you can see what they were last year, they had a great year, they had a really good year last year, and up forty-four percent from that, over eleven hundred more sold. And the average sale price is also increasing substantially. So with those two factors, the total value of what was sold was up eight hundred and sixty million dollars over the prior year, a seventy-one percent increase over prior year. So those are, those are some of the things that they were looking at. Here's the flip side to that, and where the challenge comes for, for all of us, the inventory. Look at the twenty nineteen figure in twenty twenty, and how much has been sold off. I mean, there's, there's just not much available these days as far as residential real estate. You know, they've, they've sold off a lot of the, you know, the, the good stuff, you know, there were plenty of buyers competing for that, a reduction in fifty-eight percent of the available inventory. And you could see that carries forward to some degree for land availability as well. Um, they have seen that same trend in people converting homes from, um, to year round or second homes, people buying property not with the intent to rent it. And that has impacts for us, um, in both positive and negative. It's a great thing to have more residents, more eyes on the street from a public safety standpoint, more participation in our town goings on, and those are all wonderful things. But on the flip side of that, we, you saw what percentage of revenue we get from the lodging tax. If people are pulling those houses out of a rental program and living in them, those are no longer contributing to that, that particular tax. So there's, um, you know, and then we obviously have greater public service needs that we have to provide for as well. They're not certain, um, didn't want to commit to saying this was any kind of long-term trend, but we're looking at this as a, you know, could potentially just be a COVID-related, even one, two, you know, one, two, three, five-year trend potentially. Within the town of Duck itself, you can see the amount of sales increased a hundred and twenty-two percent. So we were up, way up from even the broader Outer Banks. And then finally, looking at just a few visitors, Bureau stats, um, meals, we were down overall, but not, not terrible. You know, you could, certainly could have been a whole lot worse than this, but we're down fifteen point three percent. You could see we did a little bit better than the county as a whole there. That was down sixteen percent. Looking at lodging, again, we saw a really, really nice increase there in the, um, you know, the amount of, that's the gross occupancy there, and these, these numbers. And these, these numbers are in thousands, so that's 93 million would be the number there, up 12 and a half percent. Again, you can see Duck is trending little over 1% higher than the rest of the county, second highest in the county to, only Nags Head had higher among the municipalities. And just one last quick peek here at the, looking at the trends, Lee Nettles explained it as unpredictable and uneven when he described the year. You know, the vacation rentals, the homes and campgrounds were way up. Hotels and B&Bs actually had a down year. People were less likely to do that. Two months, the two we were closed, set record lows for the, the least amount of revenue generated for those months. However, nine of the other 10 months set record highs, never been a month in the recorded history, nine of those 10 months had the highest month they've ever recorded for, for tourism, you know, for visitation and lodging trends. Looking into the future, this is the last slide here. Early vacation rental bookings are still strong through the spring, summer months coming in. They're still looking at those as being higher than what we've seen in the past. He noted that vaccines may increase consumer confidence. That may be a good thing, that may not be a good thing for the Outer Banks. One of the reasons we've seen such a strong tourism market is that we are seeing, you know, people aren't flying anywhere for the most part, you know, and they've seen, you know, for tourist reasons at least. And they've been looking for places they can drive to, they've been looking for places that are lower density, maybe less active, but with, you know, things to do, more family-oriented. Those are things that cater to our market. So that's one of the reasons we've seen such a strong year. We don't know how that's going to impact us moving forward. They are still ceiling, seeing challenges with the hospitality workforce, you know, getting people to fill all those needs that they have. And finally, just talking about their marketing efforts, they're, they're certainly preaching that low-density family atmosphere, that we're in that drive-to market area from many major metropolitan areas in the country, and also our public safety messaging. They've been strong supporters of that throughout and are continuing that. So Mayor, that just concludes a quick overview of some of those development things, and thank you for allowing me to do that today.